All in favor of a certified closed session, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? So now I need a motion to certify closed session.
Motion to certify closed session.
Whereat, whereat, King William County School Board meeting, first meeting on this day, day two, and the term of this order, and the court orders to provision under the Information Act, and whereat, section two point two dash thirty seven twelve D of the Code of Virginia, requiring certification by the school board that such executive meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. Now therefore be it resolved that the King William County School Board hereby certifies that, to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the executive meeting to which this certification applies. And two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the executive meeting were heard, discussed, or considered.
Okay. Hold the board, please. Dr. Wagner.
Mr. Farmer.
I certify.
Mr. Wassenberg.
I certify.
Mrs. Atkins.
I certify.
Ms. Catlett.
I certify.
Mrs. Fraser.
I certify.
Thank you.
All right. We will now ask our student school board member if she would now lead us in the pledge in a moment of time.
For all who are able to stand for the passage of the pledge.
This is the United States of America, and in two, three republics, which is standing, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yes. Are there any changes to the agenda for tonight? Changes or approvals, additions?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, Madam Vice Chair, members of the board, and the guests that are here this evening. Thank you for being here in person, and for those folks that may be listening from home, we appreciate your interest in our school board meeting. We have two quick changes to this agenda, Madam Chair. Under the consent agenda, we are going to pull item five point one one, the new board proposals, and five point one two. And I understand we will be moving for discussion and possible action at the work session next Tuesday on the twenty fifth. So those would be my only recommended changes, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Does the board have any other changes? Now, motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Amen.
Second.
Move to properly second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. I'm going to now to item number five, the new revised consent agenda. And we do have a motion to approve the consent agenda for tonight.
Do you approve?
The first and the second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
As happy, we're moving right along to item number six on our agenda tonight. And item number six would be our King William Public Schools Spotlight. And we have a special guest here tonight with all the kids for a van who's going to have a presentation for us. And we thank them for coming, and we thank them for waiting on us tonight.
Great. I'd just like to introduce the staff here from All Points. Michelle Jackson is the Director of Marketing and Sales. Michelle and I have worked together for four months, working on this project to try to get it off the ground and running, and I appreciate her. And then also in the audience, I'm not sure if we're speaking tonight or not, but David, Director of Public Relations, is also here from All Points. So I'll turn it over to Michelle.
We're honored to be here today on behalf of All Points to celebrate this exciting new chapter for STEM education in King William. At All Points, we believe that technology has the power to transform communities, not just through broadband access, but through education and opportunities. And the Pop-Up STEM Lab is a really incredible initiative that will make STEM education more accessible to students all across the county. At All Points, we know that Internet is just one piece of the puzzle, and we're firm believers that true digital inclusion means giving students the tools and the experiences they need to become tomorrow's innovators. So with that, we're thrilled to both fund and support this initiative, and excited to see how students engage, learn, and innovate through the STEM program and the tools that are provided with it. This partnership is especially meaningful for us right now because it comes at a really important milestone. We have just recently completed our build and are now actively installing new customers. And so while our mission has always been to bridge a digital divide, first by bringing reliable Internet, we also want to invest in the communities that we live in, serve in, and the education there. So we're excited to be able to do both at the same time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. I want to thank you all for having us here tonight. I am Rachel Martin. I'm the ITRT at the high school, and I've brought along our other ITRTs to spotlight our new Pop-Up STEM Lab. We're very excited to have this opportunity to bring computers and especially robotics to King William for our K-12 programs. So this will reach all of our students throughout the district. And we have several missions or goals for our project, first being that we want to excite our students over robotics, computers, programming, and coding. So having a featured object, like a pop-up, to excite them to get their hands on coding with robotics. And then we are also planning to integrate into our classrooms, taking the content that the students are already learning and exciting them through the robotics that we can bring now that we have our robotics team. So we have three different demonstrations. I invite you all to join us in our pop-up lab, and we're going to quickly go through our three different robots that we have, so you can see our applications.
Is this supposed to come there?
Yes, we're supposed to go over there, I think.
I'm the vice chair at Spurton, in all spring, and I'm very excited because one of our biggest problems tonight is through, as Rachel said, bringing paper to fellow students, which isn't always easy at the loading up. And so I'm going to create a syrup, just keep a little card that they're going to have to love, but it's rather hard. Students actually need to learn how to go with this card. So we're talking, even in our pre-k programs, you can learn how to put, for example, the car is coded, it's all colors, a lot of times. And so the student can use the floor, problem, for example, I have a little map here, and the student will have to figure out how to make it from A to B, and which tile will go with question marks to get it to the next one. So the answer of this is a subsequent demonstration. So this is what I have a few more here. Verbal, the answer is, the answer is a very long, uh, uh, and then let me conclude it even now, incorporate it whatever else. So I was looking at this part of the paper, and also at the map of the video, how can we take this more accurate than the two sets? And I was looking at even exploring if you're doing a map, and a little graph that you can go, and the students find the tiles given to different parts of the map. And for older, if they didn't have, if they weren't able to use more, that will, and just refer and each arm, it will respond to the tiles. So that instead of three left, it is eight, and you have to rotate and then do something different. And the student will learn how to rotate that off, as well as prove pride, so. So a lot of, a lot of our, this, uh, that, putting it in, very, to take it in.
I'm, I, you guys, here at the mall, and I, and this is what I did, so all the lights are, I hold this leg, and say what I have to do, considering the display, all the pieces, they were made originally, they also, they're completely, so like the screen, they're done, you can use your, and, and you have to, uh, right now. Uh, so there are cardboard pages that you block, they, it has, it takes itself, it really, water, it has, it has, measure elevation, and it will, velocity, it will measure, the light, the battery, you have to use this light, they're not, right? Um, so, so that, the, um, it's got, uh, so, hold on, we have, uh, speed, road, uh, shot, uh, for, 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 uh, for, uh, they're, uh, graphic, I, for, uh, location, um, and they have, to go to the iceberg, the whole view, this is, uh, yeah, and, eight, three blocks, uh, with a little, physical, real, lot, just have a picture on it, so they can write, write, uh, circle, and, and, together, and, it also had a whole sensor in it, uh, distance, and, there is, there is light sensors, the top, they can draw, just like whiteboard, built on, and like, uh, the, the, and if you look over here, we have a TV here, the, the others want to, is they can draw. So this is a, so a whiteboard, and the student can, program, and make different shapes. So a title, actually, pretty helpful is to program, because not only do they have to know what it happens, what happens inside, uh, the, the, it's, 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 so I need to, to, in order to get the, so, so, a lot of geometry, in order to draw some of these shapes, so they also need, uh, those, but they're learning, break it down into little pieces, and, so, to, to, uh, we can turn all of the, the, so, the top, they are the banner, we brought us, the, the, all, so, this will allow K two twelve to be able to use, in line with, uh, and, and, but all this is possible, so, it's, it's, they are, 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 so, the banner, uh, the whole, the whole, and, 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 and,
And whereas the local school board members work with parents, business education professionals, and other community members to create the educational vision we want for our students. And whereas this year's theme, Champions of Opportunity Advocates for Excellence, highlights the efforts made by school board members to create pathways for student achievement and innovation on behalf of all students. And whereas School Board Appreciation Month provides an opportunity to celebrate Virginia's school board members who champion the mission of public education. Now therefore be it resolved, the King William County Division joins the Virginia School Boards Association in recognizing the contribution of the local school board members to the academic success of other school students, and expresses its sincerest recognition to local board members for their focus on the well-being and achievement of students throughout the Commonwealth. And be it finally resolved, the King William County School Division declares February twenty twenty-five as School Board Appreciation Month, and encourage this local community members and leaders to appropriately recognize our school division's dedicated school division. So on behalf of our local staff and of our school board members, thank you very much for your service, for your commitment, and for supporting our students and staff each day. Thank you.
Thank you. And, and I want to thank Hamilton Homes for these beautiful little plants, and apologize to them already that I did not have the blue pump. And we go to pray for it. It's beautiful. I'm just not gonna.
Yes, thank you all for these wonderful guests. Uh, we appreciate all the hard work that you all do every day. Um, so thank you.
So moving right along, we're at agenda item number nine. Our status is common. I had no sense to go sign that this thing. We have everyone in the audience who's like this. Seeing none, we'll move on to item number ten, where we can talk about this week for us. And let us know when we're going to do it.
Good evening, everyone.
Sorry.
Good evening, everyone. So the first thing I have to do is that S P A is really key to our leadership board. So in senior degrees, we employee enrolled or enlisted after graduation of school program, and we add their name and rank of the reservation just on our board's calendar. And then I'm looking forward to next week, so I'm really super excited to work up on these pieces. And then for my student feedback on the responses that I was going to do this month, the main one was that vaping is not allowed in our school, and then I'll receive a response saying that vaping prevention, enforcement of rules, it works really well for sure. And that's all I can say. Do you have any questions? I would love to know more about the feedback you're getting about vaping. All it just does is give you, there's too much, then there's too much. And then it works with food and water, so it kind of like my absolute one nation bar, it just says like vaping is just my bathroom. So are vape detectors still on? They have been going off. You do hear them going off all the time? Yes. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. For report. So we are now up to item number eleven, the superintendent title, and Dr. Wagner, turn that over to you.
And the next item is what will be a recurring item throughout the remainder of our current school year. We are updating the school board on the implementation and the procurement of your adopted strategic plan for twenty twenty-eight. And we've already presented to you some information on goal one and goal three over the course of the fall. And so this month, we'd like to share some draft measurable objectives for goal three. And, uh, Mrs. Rudd and Mrs. Davis are here to help me, and so is Mrs. Walensky. Are here to help us share with you some information regarding strategic goal three. And, um, we didn't, we didn't, we didn't start that.
Yeah, yes, I, um, booked tonight's presentation and made it into a smaller one.
Okay. We start.
Awesome.
Okay, thank you.
So we're excited to share with you, um, as you all know, goal three is really centered around student and staff well-being. So we are focusing on the physical and mental health of our emotional health of our students and staff. So tonight, we're just going to share a quick update on, we have some outcomes that we want to share with you, and then some progress towards behavioral objectives that we set forth. So I'm going to let Ms. Waldron share our measurable outcomes for goal three.
So our first one is by the end of the two thousand twenty-five, twenty-six academic year, King William County Public Schools will implement a strengths-based wellness screening system for all students in grades eight through twelve. Our second goal is by the end of the twenty-five, twenty-six academic year, King William County Public Schools will provide a semi-annual wellness fair to promote student health and wellness, retirement planning, and related wellness benefits. And our third measurable economic goal is by the end of the twenty-five, twenty-six academic year, King William County Public Schools will establish agency partnerships to provide wraparound services to eligible students.
Great. So, um, in sharing those measurable outcomes, one of the first things that I want to share with you is some product towards creating our students' mental, um, behavioral health needs through that emotional screener. So as you all know, our middle school has adopted the pilot E impact, the partnership through B C Q that we were working with, and, uh, they've had great success this year. And so moving forward, we would like to explore that more for K twelve. And, and our goals with that would really be to enable our educators to know how, how our students are feeling and their attitudes towards school, towards their relationships with their peers, towards their relationships with their teachers. And this would help provide us with a social-emotional curriculum. We can really tailor lessons. I will talk about this more later on in this PowerPoint, but, um, teachers are hosting daily morning meetings to try to teach skills and strategies to cope with their emotions. And so by having this screener, we'll be able to take this information with that our students are providing us and use that to tailor specific targeted lessons to support them within their well-being here at school. Also, having a better job in terms of motivation, we know that students need a strong relationship with their teachers and their peers to then begin that new process. If that relationship is not there, that journey is going to be disrupted. And so this will kind of give us a groundwork to work with that. Additionally, it can give us some progress monitoring with the students that maybe are struggling a little bit more behaviorally that we're monitoring. We're going to be able to see if the interventions that we're putting in place to support the student through their behavior plan, if it's working or if it's not. Um, and then of course, we want to bring out, looking at any of these assessments and these screeners, we want it to be age appropriate and timely for our teachers. Or are we doing a lot of assessing with our students? We would want to whichever direction we go in the screener that we adopt to use, we want it to be very simple, concise, and age appropriate for our students who are in kindergarten all the way up to our seniors who are in high school.
Can you go back just one more time? I'm sorry.
Can you share this with us later?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, we'll have this posted in more docs tomorrow.
Okay.
Okay. So I would like to talk to you all briefly about three point two, how to increase support for the physical and mental health needs for all of our staff. Well, as you all are aware, we have the employee assistance program. We have had such program for quite some time now. But an important piece that we would like for you all to know is that we have three options for our staff. If you are an employee and you participate with our insurance program, you are afforded the free benefit of the E A P through that insurance program. We also have an E A P portion that is just for our hybrid employees. So our new folks who are coming in as hybrid, you know, we have three V R S programs, those hybrid folks are our young employees that are coming in who are just joining the teaching profession, they have that afforded to them. But then finally, the E A P program that we have through Next Gen that the H R department discusses every year at our beginning year meetings, that E A P program is for any employee regardless of your V R S status, regardless as to whether you participate in our insurance with it or not. So if you are an employee and you are in need of that service, or any member of your immediate family who lives with you, you can use that service. One of the great benefits with that program is we know with mental health and the state of things today, it's hard to get a provider if you are in need. If you participate with our E A P program and you have those aid sessions that are free to you as an employee, and you still find yourself in crisis or in need of further assistance, that program can help you fast track to get service in the private sector. So that's just something that we wanted to mention to you all tonight. And then of course, March seventeenth is our Wellness Day for staff, and of course, staff has a benefit for our students as well, a dedicated day for staff to recharge and focus on self-care and well-being, providing a not much needed break to refuel and rejuvenate during the long stretch between January and spring break. So our staff are excited about that. That's one of the items that we discussed through our calendar committee. So we wanted to share those brief statements to you tonight.
Thank you.
So, um, the next part of this is looking at how are we going to enhance the conditions to support that nurturing learning environment? Uh, so before at the elementary level, one of the things that Ms. Walton and her team has established this year is hosting a daily meeting, we call it morning meeting, but it could really happen at any point during the school day. So it took me five to ten minutes to talk through, um, building that sense of community with students, working on strategies such as when I'm feeling angry, what's the appropriate way to deal with those emotions, especially if I'm feeling angry towards a friend, if I make a mistake and I say something to a friend that I shouldn't say, how do we involve that matter? How do we work together to find a solution and take accountability for our behaviors? And really, um, that's very broad, but really the important is building that sense of community amongst the classroom and that strong relationship with their teachers happening when they're having conversations. We want students to know that their classroom is a safe place, it's okay to make mistakes. It's important letting your own mistakes, and let's give you all the emotional skills and help through that. The other, um, that our middle school is doing is a house system. Again, this is another way to build community, but one of the things that we're very excited about is the community that it has built from K five. As you all know, our K two school and our three five school, and with this house system, the goal has really been to make it one school, one family, and, uh, students have been sorted into different houses. If you are familiar with the movie Harry Potter, the story Harry Potter, much like that, students have a house that they've been sorted into, and they represent House Juliana, and they earn house points. Um, this morning, we have activists being a part of very fun at rally where they recognize the house with this point. So that means students get that, um, and I can't tell you how many happy students I saw this morning. I'm just excited to be there. Teachers who look like all out of their spirit there, so it's really done a wonderful job of building that sense of community in our elementary school. Um, this is like the middle, a middle school and high school is a little bit different. Um, there's still really wonderful things happening. Our principal has shared that they, at the middle school level, they highlight a character for their mother and mom. Uh, they do so many lessons. Uh, there's some cool lessons that are doing some of the information given from the impact. So that's a joy that that screener has enforced, whether you're in the middle school. Um, and at those schools, they share that we do, um, they teach whole school expectations throughout the school year. So it's not, here are expectations for students at the beginning of the year. Then they continue to go back to it and remind students what those expectations are, and demonstrate and model those expectations as well. So students understand what, what we want to see for the limited years we like to see in a school setting. So, um, that is our quick rundown of how we are working towards achieving strategic goal three for students' well-being and success. Do you all have any questions for our dean here?
No, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. So we're up to item eleven point two with our, um, budget consideration.
Yes, thank you for your, and just to go back to the, to the prior item. You know, by COVID, the junior school divisions are required in every odd year to give a school board update on progress toward the strategic plan. And so that's one of the reasons why we're doing this periodically, you know, every month or two, we're, we're giving a little bit more detail on how we are trying to help the board fulfill the strategic plan. So we're in an odd year, and, um, we will have that in line in the paper, which is required by COVID Virginia. So the second item is really just an opportunity for board members to ask any questions about the proposed FY twenty-six budget that we have presented two times so far, based on the feedback from the board. Uh, we have all that information posted on the school division's website. You know, as we look at it on Tuesday, which is another work set on the twenty fifth, we're handling problems. It's our hope that the school board will be able to approve, um, a school board's proposed budget for FY twenty-six for the board of supervisors, because our twenty-year board supervisor is coming up on March eleventh. And ideally, we'd like to have the school board's proposed FY twenty-six budget to present to the supervisor at the end of that meeting, so that that's something that we can discuss. We really just wanted to give the board members an opportunity to ask any questions about, um, the budget proposals that you've seen so far. Uh, any questions about the timeline, process, and if it's a question that I can answer this time here, it might be helpful for some clarification. If you remember in our last board session, we shared not only some highlights on the operating run, but also several of the other budgets as well, primarily the capital improvement plan, uh, that we are proposing for the next five years total. And you shared with us feedback about, you know, out of desire to be doing a ten-year capital improvement plan, so that information is real helpful. But just tonight, summary, just wanted you to know there's a chance to ask any questions or make any comments ahead of our board session coming up.
So I, I do not have any questions, but I do think that there were changes that we wanted to make. Um, but we can certainly discuss those on Tuesday.
Just other than one of these, we already talked about like the behavioral, second behavioral person.
Yeah, this definitely was the last, um, work session.
And I think we made those changes before we posted the file.
I believe we did.
Um, the other one was the assistant A Ds.
Dr. Wagner, you called them assistant A managers?
Yeah, not necessarily an assistant athletic director. It's, it's a seasonal assistant to the athletic director. Someone to help with the organization of events, um, someone to help set up, someone to be like extra hand in the event, and a trusted hand in the event that the athletic director, the athletic director was unable to make or been. You know, there are lots of events, and that's, that's a lot to ask of one person to attend all. In some cases, there may be a home event and an away event. That's one that, um, the athletic director might like to attend. Away event, and then needing sort of a keyboard available at the school to help supervise the home event. So it's really a seasonal system.
What did we do before? Or what have we been doing? Because I know we've never had them, so I just want to understand why we may need them.
So in my time here, we've never had them.
And, and I'm, I guess, I think the explanation I just gave was my rationale.
Yeah.
My prior experiences, um, there's always been, I've always had a seasonal assistant, even when I was a principal, high school principal, I had a seasonal assistant to provide support to the athletic director and to the athletic program.
I kind of liked what Mr. Farmer had said when he asked if maybe a student could do that, or somebody who is maybe like learning how to do sports medicine or something like that, like who sets up the basketball games and stuff now?
And I think that can be a part of a program, but I think having a student in charge of a public event is probably
Not the best.
Not the best thing. But we certainly could have student assistants in the same way we have students that assist the athletic director.
I mean, I haven't seen the presentation on this safety communications director, but I say scratch that and focus on the schools. I mean, if someone's going to call me and tell me my child was threatened, but I don't have a behavioral specialist dealing with the child threatening it or a program for it, then I really don't care about the email. I don't care what their position is. We need to focus on the children in the schools. But I mean, I just don't see a need right now when we don't have what we need in the schools to deal with it, to create more top heaviness when we need to stop dealing with the behaviors in the schools. So I personally would like to see that scratched and that money going towards being in the schools, the behavioral specialists, the lower level in-school type things and all of the stuff to deal with, what we're dealing with in the schools at a higher rate, year by year by year. I don't need someone to send out a mass email if there's nobody there to protect my child. And I want the people there to protect my child and I want that $150,000 spent on protecting the children before we create a position of telling parents that their child has been in jeopardy.
Okay, that's helpful feedback.
I think the other thing, there's a step team stipend on here. Would that not fall under this that we talked about?
It's not currently on there, but I would have to remind myself, or the other type. Is the dance team on there? Sorry, I didn't bring that up.
I don't think so. No. Well, no, I'm sorry. We have music and drill team.
Drill team, that's drill team. Okay, so yeah, it would go on there.
Okay. And then I think another question that I had is could the, for Cool Springs, could the library A.D. or paraprofessionals also help with lunch monitoring?
So in that current budget, it did not move forward.
Okay, good, okay. Even the lunch monitors did not move forward?
Yes, ma'am.
I think that was one with the Cool Spring, with Cool Spring getting the additional paraprofessionals in kindergarten, we thought maybe she could work that.
Yeah.
But then, of course, it would not happen. So I mean, first came the show, could we find the money to maybe get acquaintance and some assistance if we have the paraprofessionals that could help Cool Spring. There's schools that we felt like there's a lot of assistance needed from teachers and they don't really get that, sit down, eat my lunch 20 or 25 minutes.
Yeah.
So that's something we can try to work in, if that's what you all would like to see in the superintendent's role for the school board.
Yeah. No, I'm okay. For the middle school athletic expansion, what programs were we including in this again for the $75,000?
I think it's more than anybody's thinking and we would have an answer for it by the next week or that looks like before we make a decision.
Okay. For high school, the science teacher that we have on here, is this for chemistry?
So yes, that's already budgeted. Is there a number for that?
Um, 98.
The chemistry teacher was already budgeted, so I think we noticed that after the first draft, so you weren't here last week, so I might have your draft, the second draft in my office.
It's okay.
We did.
Yes, I got it, yes.
I apologize.
So is it, so we already budgeted for the chemistry teacher, so the science is in addition?
No, the chemistry teacher, that was, I was thinking of the chemistry teacher, and I think that was already budgeted.
Okay.
So that's the budgeting.
Okay. Do we know where we're at with finding a chemistry teacher?
I could tell you, I don't think we're anywhere. Ms. Rod's been to a couple, a couple of job fairs and I know that a lot of the teaching candidates out there are scarce.
Okay. All right. And so, again, with King William High School, or the seasonal managers, those are the ones that we were just talking about, correct?
Yeah.
No, I think those are the only changes that I would like to address.
And I guess if you have any things that can come on this week, there's a lot, Dr. Wagner, I will make sure to incorporate those before we bring that to you on Tuesday. And I'd like to have a draft as close as possible so we know exactly what we're looking at.
Okay. For school safety and student wellness, what did we, what did we take out from here or all this still remaining?
That's the essential behavioral specialist.
Yeah.
So the essentials apply for the grant for four. What we had left to add to, and I didn't ask as far as where those two would go, I'm just said to add two, we tried to budget two in our request. We didn't apply for the grant for four positions. I did get the notification today that we can go in instead of that grant, so I'm going to work on that tomorrow. So there's chances we could still get that, but you know, we're all pulling from that same pot of money. So that's not a priority. And then the behavioral specialist, we had originally put one in the budget and this actually conflicted that we maybe there was an elementary and a secondary or however this team decided best use of them.
Right, so we move forward with two and not three.
That's what we're trying, yes.
Can you explain to me how this will work with the behavioral specialist?
You mean how that position operates?
Correct.
So that behavior specialist is someone that has a background in behavioral analysis or behavioral therapy. A person we would expect to be able to provide direct services to students, like a case load, so to speak, for some of the high needs areas, but also that person would be able to provide some coaching to teachers. And this is sort of related to the classroom community that Ms. Davis was talking about a few moments ago. Behavior specialists can help teachers understand a little more about what motivates kids and the kinds of behaviors that they're seeing and help a teacher develop strategies to mitigate their behavior in a classroom. And I think there are notable differences between the kinds of behavior therapy that might occur at Cool Spring and the kinds that might occur here at Hamilton Falls. And so I think Ms. Patton's request last week was appreciated in that it's, it might be a lot to expect one person to serve four schools and teachers, not just four, but teachers across four schools. So having an elementary and a secondary focus could be beneficial for the division.
And this would be in addition to the guidance counselor, right?
So I have, I know someone who is a behavioral specialist in a large district and they go into the classroom when students are having poor behavior, unmanageable behavior, and try and keep the child in the classroom and help get the behavior under control. And then they also have a program that they send them, kind of like an alternative school like Art Impact or whatever, that's for behavioral management, but also has the educational component, so they aren't missing the education. So they serve a multitude of roles to assist in trying to keep the children in the classroom or get them back in.
And the elementary alternative program that we had, we had pushed that to 27. So we were going to add the behavioral specialist this year and then hopefully add them next year where we can have time to set that up, but not ask too much right now.
And so the guidance counselor right now, we're only asking for one at Cool Spring?
Yeah, so that would be a position that we can, a new guidance counselor that would be a Title I position. So we can run that through Title I, and so it's not really an additional revenue source.
Could not maximize by having that counselor also be a behavioral specialist?
Well, I think it depends on the skill set. A counselor is going to have an endorsement in school counseling.
Correct, yeah. Yeah, I know how that works, but I'm saying could we not look for somebody who also is a behavioral?
So the counselor heading to Cool Spring will actually be in the rotation for resource, so they will be doing like mental health type activities with the classes on a resource plan.
Okay. And just for clarification for everybody, all of these mental health support avenues that we have, these are all from, you will speak with the parents first and then this kid will get the help that it needs, correct?
If you could be a little bit more specific, like if there was a situation where you're working with a behavior specialist?
Exactly.
I just want to make sure I interview.
Yeah, so I mean, and there really is, I don't think a very good way to say it, but any child who's going to be like going to the counselor or a behavioral specialist is going to be intervening in the classroom or outside of the classroom, like we're not just doing these things without parental consent.
Correct. Yeah, typically, it's always best practice and in my leadership experience, that we would always interact with, so let's say if the counselor is providing a follow-through toward, I think that the counselor would then seek parental permission before calling the students to participate in the group. Typically, when there's a student who needs a specific behavior plan, whether the teacher who's been coming in, or the behavioral intervention, a student's case manager, should they be a student with an IEP, parents are involved in that process because we would want their input in terms of how we're supporting their health here at school, behavior. There's certainly a firm relationship there. In terms of the school counselor who would be at least at Cool Springs to provide those weekly lessons for students, that's not a weekly lesson targeted on cooking skills and strategies and social emotional awareness, but that would be necessarily It would be like 22 to 60 a week. So we would warrant permission for that if we had another lesson that the counselor provided for that entire grade level for that week. So, you know, if your parents have asked, they can always ask, request to see curriculum that we're using to structure the lessons and what they're doing. So that's always, you know, fully, parents say something that the counselor would provide.
Okay.
That answers your question.
Yes.
Any other questions, comments, suggestions as they prepare for next week? Our budget work session. And please remember that if you do have those comments, questions, suggestions, you said, oh, I forgot to say this, call Dr. Wagner and he will pass it on to us longest and we can get that in the presentation hopefully or get your question answered. Are we ready to move on?
Yep.
All right, we move on to item number 12, our instructional item, instructional update. And
I think it's Ms. Davis.
I think this is you again, Ms. Davis.
Start now.
Sorry, y'all get to hear from me multiple times tonight. You're going to start this presentation off, we have a few different sections that we're going to share with you. So the goal of this first part is to give you all a quick overview of division level data. And then we have our school principals here that will present their specific data. And then we want to also share some celebrations that are taking place in our school, from history month, kindness week, we have lots of special people, we've also been recognizing that there's our whole resource officers, school counselors, school board. We just want to try to take a moment to give you guys a quick update in terms of where we're in data and then kind of share some celebrations with you. So I'm going to take our mid-year division data. And as I'm presenting, I may talk a little bit more about elementary off the top of Ms. Wilkin, just to kind of save us some time, but to also share our elementary updates as well that I'll be able to do.
Yes.
So we're going to give you a quick overview of iReady. So decisions take your diagnostic, they're taken three times a year. So as you all know, we did run in the fall, we did one in the year and the one in the spring. What we're looking at is five different levels and where we want to see students, we want to see them in that yellow or green area. In that yellow area, that means that they're approaching grade level. And that's sort of where we expect our students, if you think about it, because we've not taught a whole of the grade level yet, we're only halfway through the school year. So we would assume that students may not know everything that is correlated to that grade level. And of course, that is one of these students that we, or grade level, we're in and question marks. And we do have some students who are performing the low grade level as well, probably a bit of what we're doing with that data to support all of our students. So as you can see, looking at data from now, as a division, we had 1,300 students at K-8. We have should be tremendous growth. If you look at the very top of that graph right there, you will see how much our green has grown. We've got over, you know, about 30% of our students are within that green area, which is wonderful. That is a huge celebration. And as you can see, that red has been decreased significantly. One of the things that we attribute to this success is not only the implementation of the iReady program, but certainly the wonderful teachers that are helping in our classrooms. As you all know, we have been a part of a consortium called CID. And with being partners with that, they've given us access to pacing and assessment and we've been analyzing that as well along with iReady, K-8. So we are excited to see this version now. And then things for reading, as you all know, at the elementary level, we have a section with that. We also have a report curriculum that we've put in place. We have a lot of initial changes and changes regarding meeting at the elementary level. However, we have seen that really begins to pay off in the student growth, seeing that our students now are at 38%, of them are approaching grade level, 20% early on, and 70% at or above grade level. So those are some great successes. What we want to see is growth from fall to winter and we're excited to see what students will reach us when we test again in the spring, which is about a month or so. For that, we are, this is really a pretty good data and I know that graph is very, very small, but the most exciting thing about this is we went from about 32% of our students tested in the high-risk range to our kindergarten third grade to, in the fall, to 19% are high-risk. which is about a month. Uh, for that, we are, this is really a private data, and I know that graph is very, very small. Um, but, the most exciting thing about this is we sent from about thirty-two percent of our students testing in the high-risk range to our kindergarten third grade to, and the fall, to nineteen percent are high-risk. So, we've had significant growth with our students. So, um, the students who have shown that growth and that are not that moderate on their grade level, they still have student reading plans and they're being monitored. Um, but this shows us that our engagement for our students is working. And we have lots to celebrate. Our teachers are doing a fabulous job of implementation of the curriculum, and we're really proud of our students. So, we're excited to see that at our own valves. Um, this is just a quick reminder that valves next year will go from fourth grade to eighth grade. We'll have a K eight spread. This data that we have now is just the three, but next year it'll be eight, which will be a really good comparison for our iReady data. What we have found when we dig into the data, many of our students who are performing within that red, the two-grade level and three-grade level below, are also correlated to the students who are identified as high-risk on valves, which requires student reading plans. So, the data is lining up, which is, is really exciting if you wanted to check. Um, but, it's just a quarter-two benchmark that I mentioned, CIP, which is our consortium that we work with to class pacing and assessment available for our teachers and some instructional resources. So, we succeed in implementation of them. We are currently benchmarking, and we have followed their pacing for the CIP elementary level. And we've seen some improvement. What I do wanna point out is science has grown from quarter-one to quarter-two um, in all areas. That will also be a significant improvement from quarter-one to quarter-two. Um, history has it as well. One of the things that I will point out and recognize that we have had a decrease in our reading. Uh, however, you can get some important to note here, that these assessments are not aligned to the four-grade coming up of teaching. So, when students take these quarter-two benchmarks, we are working with a consortium that serves about seven divisions across the state. So, they write, they write the benchmark as very generic. They want every education that's using the same core curriculum. So, across the board, within the, the consortium, reading rates are varied because they may have not got specific skills yet within the curriculum, or they may not have spent the time on this skill. So, that's something that the consortium recognizes and something that they're working to improve for next year. So, that data is a little bit skewed there. Um, but we're looking forward to see what quarter-three grades as we should have covered most reading skills by then using our quarter-one. Um, and then lastly, we have our division data, which, um, this shows from August to January our attendance rate. Um, as you can see, we're, we're doing really well in that area. Um, do you wanna point out that while we do have over ninety percent attendance rate, we are reaching out to all of our students who have ten or more excused or unexcused absences. Um, as we have an updated attendance policy that states students with eighteen or more absences may need to submit an attendance waiver. We want to begin that communication, that line of communication sooner than later. So, our, our school teams have been reaching out to families to notify them of their student absences and talk through support, what's going on, and just making them aware of what the attendance rate is and what our attendance policy is. Uh, any quick questions? Um, I would do that pretty fast, so I apologize if, any quick questions?
Madam Chair, I have a question. And is this something that we can post?
Oh, yeah.
So, we'll have this posted tomorrow as well.
Thank you.
Sure.
I'm gonna keep moving through, uh, and go through Ms. Welkin's data real quick. Uh, so, then you can see her attendance um, varies a little bit slightly for that school, but she is still within that average rate of ninety percent. So, again, her team is working together to look at attendance um, privately basis to those non-hospital patients. Here is iReady um, Cool Spring data. Where you can see the students um, at K two have made a significant progress here. And just letting you know, the celebration going from eighteen percent of our students in the fall being three or more grade levels below to five percent. As they, as they teach, um, significant amount of progress that our students are showing. So, we're very excited about that. And one of the things that we did, um, and here's our math data as well. You can see that growth continue with Cool Spring. One of the things that we've done with the teachers is, now that we have this data, what do we do with it? Um, our professional learning last month was to look at their classroom data and group students by their quadrants. And so, they looked at students who are performing in their red, and then that makes more of a conversation that helps support those students. We looked at students who were in their red and showing some progress. How can we continue that progress? And we did the same for each of the, um, with green. We looked at students who made progress today, but also students who have, were in the green in the fall and were reading and they're committed to children. Because that's also something important and then just the discussion that we need to have to help drive our direction. So, it was very valuable to my whole student. We did this um, with teachers during their resource planning last month. And this is just a closer look at their valve data. You can see kind of they're having the most, um, significant growth with, um, they had, in the fall, they had um, seventy-five students at high. And then if you look at the winter, they went down to twenty-six students. That's, that's a pretty significant growth. You can, that shows that they're, they're teach, they're doing well in their teaching, but also, the assessment is probably very hard for the governors in the fall, and they're very new to school, and they're learning skills that aren't too long. And so, now they're showing that they're mastering those skills that are being taught in this, whatever mid-year is, so, yeah. But we, we're excited to celebrate that. Um, a quick, uh, see, and, um, if you look at this bar on the left, you will see they're all within that ninety percent attendance range, and so they're, they're continuing to show that we're there. Um, and then their, their diagnostic data um, is a little bit different. Typical springs, still significant growth here. And what we wanna point out is the, the percentages that you see there in the green and the yellow. Um, that is pretty significant growth there from fall to spring. Or yeah, maybe from fall to winter. Um, same department. And then, um, that, that is everything for the elementary. Do you guys have any questions for me? I can help answer. All right, I'm gonna turn it over to Dr. Rindel.
Thanks so much. My phone, my own water, I just keep on getting. My blood work is clean, my lungs are clear, and yet just keep on going. I pause, I greatly apologize. Um, but, we are doing well at Hamilton Homes. Um, we are very proud of the work that we have put into this school year. Um, our attendance continues to look absolutely fantastic. So, although our protocols are a little bit, a little bit in February, like that, um, you will see our lowest amount though was ninety-five percent. So, that can be a little bit misleading, and so you start looking at those numbers. So, we are absolutely proud of some of the, um, and then this trainer in our front office knew a lot of work with our attendance. Um, we've been looking, working with, this is a new program this year that has helped automate some of our letters that we send home to parents that keep them in the loop with the, um, absence that we have. And we still do follow up with personal phone calls, but we do believe that is important. There's more of that automation happening with the personal follow-up. We do that as well, too. Um, we're very thankful for that. Um, and these are actually live. These are not our benchmark, of course, they're our, our iReady first. So, these is the scores representing the program working on to, to the three and a half. And these are for reading. Um, see, at the very bottom, what I'm most proud of is forty-three percent of our students. It's almost, that's probably, and that is called their typical growth goal. So, they have met their yearly growth already in the program, and sixteen percent of our students have met their threshold over the year. So, our graphs are not as, um, looking at the elementary at first glance, but we've started digging into the individual stories there, and you see the impact we're making, and then looking at that typical growth goal. We do have a lot going on. And we reflect it to you as a school about some of the things we're gonna do going into, do a spring testing with that as well. Um, it isn't two to three hour testers over for our students, and that is helpful for them to stand in us, and it's important for the S L as well. Um, to get some more accurate data, some feedback from our students, we may adjust the way that we approach some of this testing as well to get a little bit more accurate information on where the students actually are. Um, and this is where we're armed for math, and math is more, a little more, school-wide. English, that's a more straight for us. And so, for math, unfortunately, twenty-nine of our students met their typical growth goal. So, they weren't met their yearly progress, and seven percent of the students met their threshold. But overall, we are still making progress. Um, and as Ms. Davis said, we are meeting with our iReady coaches and learning how to use this data. Um, this is a brand new program for our teachers. And really, the story that we're seeing at Hamilton Homes is our students who are putting the time in, making the minutes every month, um, receiving every week. Four minutes a week is what they send for content. But the medium, they're passing what they call one content lesson with about seventy-five to eighty percent accuracy. Those are the ones that are really excelling. And these are what we're doing. Go to the next slide. Um, we have our instructional coaches, as I said earlier, one of our I T R Ts, also a math coach. Um, they're the teachers, and they get to start looking at those students that aren't growing now and try to figure out the why. Um, so, that is what we're doing, you know, our members, our members, I like that group. So, we're looking at our testing environment for that, and then also what those students are doing with their time in the program. So, we know, you can really have an impact, so we make sure we can use that part of time. All right, so, here's that, you get your student on there. That's what I'm gonna look for too, very please. Forty minutes a week math and English, and then one to two lessons at seventy-five percent accuracy. All right, so, look at our benchmark scores. Once again, you will see reading is an overall spread across the board. Um, we see in the left, between sixth, seventh, eighth grade. The first quarter benchmark score, and then the right E story level is your second quarter benchmark score. The blue dots in the middle, and this is how our, um, adventure program manages to us. So, that is the average score. When you see the bar across in the red, our students who scored under fifty percent in the benchmark assessment, in the yellow is seventy and seven percent on the assessment. In the green is anyone who scored under seventy percent in the assessment. Don't worry about the height so much, that's just the numbers that the students are possessed. So, you're more looking at the amount of red compared to the amount of yellow and the amount of green, and then the average score across the board. So, our students in general, it's about seventy-six percent average across, and we are doing very well. Um, our math students, um, we are seeing a little bit more of that red in there. We already have some work to do. Um, we did see games in the second quarter. Um, we spent more time looking at that benchmark in dance, and that's not teaching the test. It's actually really sure that we are preparing them for the rigor and the experience that you want those to be able to show, that they know how to. Show the standards. And I just want to let you know what we're doing for me, you know. Um, so, it's following success for students with disabilities, and our math students, which is a focus of our school support plan. They actually increased their test rates and outperformed our overall pass rate in the three D and the half. So, some of the structured supports we put into our students who are traditionally not succeeding are working. Our reading pass rate is in the eighth percentile of all CIP schools, which means only twenty percent of all schools across Virginia that do CIP perform better than us. So, we did very, very well in that. And then for reading support, that, our reading specialist, um, actually added a small English sixth class for the second week's population of students who just really need some patch support. So, that was fantastic. So, what are we doing now? We, we, it is with our back coach, check for that alignment and for that rigor. So, like I said, we're kinda doing that backwards design, making sure we're looking at what the lessons look like, to make sure we're teaching that. And then we're pulling in those skills back into our current lessons. The good thing about reading math is that it can be handled several. We can build back into you pretty easily, playing current lessons. And then looking at it to surprise one place. We recognize we need more time, um, instruction in the classroom. So, right now, we have fifty minutes per, um, day, math, and English per day. Um, talk about comparing ourselves to CIP, um, programs. They have anywhere from sixty to potentially ninety minutes a day. And we're not looking to go back to ninety in the classroom, but maybe around sixty minutes a day of instruction. Um, that would be a big change, that's adding about one day to class a week for our schedule. And we all know that it's not just the time, it's making use of that time in the classroom. So, the minutes won't do it, but it is something that we're looking to. And then finally, to build an intervention remediation into the school thing that we're making, that's using the time. We have our kids, and we have. Any questions? All right. Thanks so much. Oh, and one thing. Um, the plan part of you, I know it does not look full of philosophy, and that is for a reason, though. It is all created from a plan. So, from a plan, and then that way we're all working together from a plan. So, I hope that that came across to you. It's not that it's a small.
I'm gonna kill it, I'm saying. Take care of it. I tried, but I, I just don't have a green thumb. I, I, I've tried. Matthew takes care of my plants at home.
That's fine, that is fine. And pass it along.
Yeah, I, I, I just can't do it, I've tried.
All right, good evening. I'm here to talk to you tonight about Kingdon High School, and some of the cars that we've made so far this year. Um, like I said, we're proud of the accomplishments that we've made so far. We are continuing to grow. You can see that our tenant rate, um, did it pretty hard so far this month. Um, it's still in ninety percent. We put a lot of work into making this communication with parents. It is there to have, they are aware of the policies in the quality feedback with the letters, um, that have been accessed at the halls at every age, meetings, every school. Um, we can communicate going out in the newsletter, just making sure that that information is there. We know that parents are working very hard to make sure their students are coming to school as much as possible. So, looking at some of this data. Um, tonight, I have a list of the areas that will impact our S Ls in the greatest. Um, if you want to see a full complete list of all the mixed data from all of our subjects, we did have our teachers who have all of the data that is available, like I said. Um, so, let's start with alcohol. Um, you can see that the pass rate is fifty-one percent. This is an improvement in quarter-one. Um, very proud of that, the teachers and officials who put together the data. They also broke down the standards that showed success versus standards of concern. So, for example, um, standards of success in outdoor, we have tallies that come to linear equations, linear equality, identifying the behavior in the videos, all of the metrics of the linear function. Whereas a standard of concern would be transformation of a linear function, wrapping the components, and wrapping linear components with certain conditions. The reason why that's important is because that's tied to the remediation plan that also. English eleven, looking at the number of sixty-three percent. I'm going to turn it back to the second. If you look at that fifth and a half grade, we are very proud of that. Good to be here. We had a hard act, we're just hoping to get a good score.
Really quickly. Actually, I would love to see this, um, for Hamilton Homes. The breakdown, if possible.
The demographic breakdown?
Please.
Sure.
Go ahead, sorry.
It's okay.
I got it.
Obviously, our biology honors class is doing extremely well with their pass rate, it was a little bit of a, a radius of success and concern. Um, even though those who are more technical, yes, they still have areas in each part of the world. Um, theater biology, um, twenty-one percent pass rate. The biology is in the top of the order. We are working to convert all of the night school positions with the environmental. So, we kind of have to get through with our biology students because that will end up in the kind of great class, but most of our students are going to biology next year. So, we have a very small population of students that are in biology. Um, and those who want to sign up for the summer of last year, invite them, and we'll take it again. So, those are working very hard to, to improve those scores. And then looking at our S one, the positive pass rate. So, to address some of the areas of concern, every positive area is focused on the tier-one destruction of exploring information, and some other regular closing activities. Teachers are analyzing smaller, small sessions with their study managers, their classroom teachers, working on test-taking strategies, hands-on, or interactive interactive notebooks, helping students to evaluate and correct why information was missed. So, it's important that the information that was analyzed by our teachers is also shared to our students, as far as what they're very important in their concern are. Um, in addition, every positive area has set up remedies, either before school or after school. The Eagle Shining S L is picking up in about four weeks, three and a half weeks. And this is the first day of the Eagle Shining remediation. One of our Eagles teachers is staying at the school. Um, today is the fifth, so we're going to leave the facility. They're staying at the school for one and a half weeks days to work with students who have identified might need to. They're staying on their school for one hour on Tuesdays to work with students who have identified need, might need some additional support. Um, so history will be meeting with students early in the fall when the whole school starts. Math and some also remediation. They will provide four sessions of remediation that on prior SLOs, either before or after school. This is how the target is, some of the students are struggling a little bit more. Um, this is some results from the fall SLOs. But let's add one more to the past column and take away from today. Um, the session, fall session actually closes tomorrow for fall SLOs. So we were, we had one more in today, um, which was great. We were very excited for that senior. So it was keeping away that often that could, you know, students remediate, 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 try again. Just trying to make sure that they, every team is possible to pass over to SLOs. Um, the students that do not have their normal communities can have a twenty-one percent or even a whole east. The work ease assessment is not consistent to the writing, reading SLOs. Um, so we can have some success with that.
Ms. Ward, if you don't mind.
Sure.
The students that, that you're referring to on this slide, because they've tested in the fall and all your classes are year long. Who are these students?
Yes, so these are combination from our compress. So our students that maybe still need an SLO to graduate. Some of our students have attended an SLO this spring, but do not achieve success in the spring. So we wanted to give them a chance in the fall window to see if they could get back to that. We want some individual after remediation prior to class.
For students that are doing virtual Virginia classes, for those that have SLOs, where do we get that out of?
Um, it's combined into the SLO then, because they come in and take the SLOs.
Okay.
So it will be combined.
Do you have anything for that one here or no?
Um, I cannot separate it out. Um, that is something that we can look at going forward. Something that you'd like.
I'd like to know what chemistry looks like.
And I think chem- chemistry will take in the spring, but yeah, we can do that.
Um, and we're, you know, it's going to probably take the SLO.
That's a good point, too.
The SLO that should become our first clients, is that the first level for the biology? So you should have, they have biology, they don't have to take the next one. You should have something that probably can have our clients SLO. But very rarely can they get to a point where they have chemistry as well.
Okay.
Just that's. What's your part graduation? Um, any questions? Sorry, I went through that quick and really.
I have one more, if you don't mind. In, in the past, and maybe the folks at the school know this, how, have we done fall retesting each year?
Yes, as far as I'm aware.
Okay.
Yes. Um, and CTE testing that we can have here at the, um, third quarter benchmarks, like March eleventh inch. So we'll have the, um, CTE world.
That's very positive. I appreciate it. And for, um, Ms. Wilk and Dr. Widel, you know, I appreciate you assembling all these data and allowing us to, to see that and to, and to, um, you know, react to the fact that we're trying to grow the green, especially at the K eight level because of those assessments, the I-Ready assessment in particular. Um, this is the first time in years that King William has had a standardized assessment program, at least K eight, but now into the high school, first time in years. So we're, that we're, we're now able to, um, compare apples to apples, year after year, across the different content areas. And so it's, as you can see, the power of having that information is, um, is pretty cool because it helps you make sensible instructional decisions on ways to help students. So many thanks to all of our instructional team for, um, helping us put this instructional program together over the course of the last year. It's certainly something that they should be proud of. And, um, you know, I had mentioned this to you last year as one of my goals. I'm very proud of that instructional focus. And to see these results and to see the growth that students are making is precisely the reason why we're doing it. So, thanks.
Thank you. Um, just to highlight the picture in front of you, um, that is actually created by one of Frank Garstiness. That is a call creator, she is a four and a half design. So she has created that document for you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, I understand that you guys, I think in this previous presentation, um, one of the things that we were trying to celebrate is the first class finale that students were supposed to do. And when I said that there was lots of spirit happening, you can see that aliens visited us for another week. You had tires in here today. Uh, I was there participating at the event. So it was, it was really a wonderful time, um, had by all. And that's again, where we were celebrating students with us, also coming together as a whole community, um, to celebrate. And in our houses. So there was a lot of pride in our students as they did their house chant. There was a decent scene after me. So it's true that it was a really great time and we, and it was barely a day. We did it in about twenty-five minutes and the students continued our instructional day. So we are excited to celebrate that and showcase how we're building a community at elementary level. Continuing that, so the other celebration that we have is we did kindness week, which was a lot of week. And I will say being one of the poles of the thing throughout, um, even though we have a couple of snow days, they kept the kindness coming down. And they had a wonderful spirit week. And we see, um, Velvet and Lois, the person who she worked with for eight months, she created kindness week. So it was all student driven, the ideas that they had. So it was pretty exciting. And then I'm there to do our secondary.
I think we can say all of the years we wanted to, um, because also things that we have, um, let me clarify whether it's classical learning days, excuse me. Um, Black History Month concert is coming up next week. That we're excited about that for our chorus concert. Um, we do have, uh, Wagoner Wall and Heroes, H, 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 M, S, Door, that are great, who are up. And this act, our team are always highlighting, um, several, um, history artists or Black influential artists that are currently in the political. Um, and so she does her room, she always has amazing things going on.
Yes, and at my high school, several of our instructors created posters on the breaking barriers. As an example, through Mr. Lacy's class. Um, so students have preparation for all of the new history. Um, it goes on an individual that challenges the system and impactful in their efforts that we're making.
Okay.
We also had kind of fun activities, constantly put that together. Um, so we had something for every day. We actually sent it into this week as well. Um, our staff actually got called in at two. And then we had earned our first two winners for our kindness board challengers. Um, they would have told them to be out to celebrate as well. But as you can see, we had several students who turned in their kindness boards. So we are very proud of them.
So at the high school for kindness week, our counselors created an affirmation station. Our students have, the, 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 they're out there. Um, just some positive words, either themselves or friends, family members. Um, so they were very proud of the word.
And then last week, we have lots of presentations in February. February is in very busy month of education in the world. Um, the weekend is important just because all of the people that helped lead our school is very special. So we did celebrate our school counselors the first week in February. I think that was the week that we, in school, for the whole week. So they had a whole week to be celebrated, you know, and we did some kind of highlight from each and every one of them.
Anything that you wanted to add to that?
Uh, we also celebrated, um, school officer, um, school resource officer, we changed the grade, it was on February fifteenth. Um, I wouldn't miss that day, but we still try to recognize this of, um, we've got sort of good and often deals. We're serving at elementary level and then certain women, um, who always have to do really great things as a team. Um, these were kind. And then we wanted to take a moment to give you all a heartfelt thank you. We know that you spend lots of hours here with us, probably with your family. You have very busy jobs, and my thoughts are that you already take time with you every day to dedicate to your goal. So we appreciate you and we thank you. Um, but hopefully you've got an opportunity to see all of the wonderful work that our schools put together to honor you. And we enjoyed, um, celebrating you. So thank you for what you do. And then we did also have a little shout out to Miss Petruson as well. Because she, um, is a very key player in everything that we do here. And very interested in just someone who's a supporter of our overall school community. So we appreciate Miss Petruson. So, um, but we thank you all. And we're very thankful and grateful for the effort for our student.
So in addition to all of the other celebrations in February, there was also Emma. Um, so we are having our CTE program, um, and this is a day week, so you will see off that in the week beginning of the year. Thank you all.
Thank you. Thank you. So a lot of good data, a lot of good information, a lot of good celebrations. We appreciate it. All right, we ready to move on? Next item on our agenda for tonight is our item number thirteen, our school nutrition report. The parents have already moved in the podium.
So I'll provide you with the note later. Any questions?
I think you're awful with Mrs. Catlin, not you. Okay. Number fourteen, our final item, final items, and this is Ms. Loggins.
Um, I have two budget amendments for you tonight. It's definitely a literacy.
Yes.
Yeah, I, I have those. Um, so we did receive additional revenues, um, from a literacy grant that.
This group, it's, um, submitted a literacy agreement to the Department of Education in total of sixty thousand dollars. Thirty thousand Hamilton Homes and thirty thousand point ten. And, um, those two programs, we received additional funding for what is it, student facilities and for a motion learner program. And so, you know, we'll give a, uh.
Can I have a motion to accept?
Accept.
Remove the property second all in favor of say aye.
Aye.
The opposers at home, because we don't, we don't trust them when they say no to money, right?
Right.
All right, and this second budget amendment for you. Um, we initiated the P car program, the year has started. And this P car program has a rebate. And so the rebate comes back to us. And so this year, we received a total of twenty thousand, three hundred and twenty-two dollars and fourteen cents. Nutrition will receive three thousand, five hundred and sixty-four dollars and forty-two cents. And the operating fund will receive sixty thousand, eight hundred and seventy-two to port towards furniture and accessories. Any questions, comments? If not, I would like board approval.
What? What does nutrition need the money for?
So she gets a portion in which is her program. So her pro- is allocated based on her expenses.
Okay.
She uses her part for, and she gets that portion of it. So because we have separate funding, we send funding sources, we keep that separate.
What are you gonna do with your riches? What are you gonna do with your riches?
Oh, I don't know. I'll spend it on food.
Catlin was gonna ask you a question.
I am sad that I'm a spud, outstanding balance.
Did I give a motion?
So move.
Second.
Move the property second all in favor of say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Don't hear them. Okay.
All right. Thank you so much.
Moving right along. Item number fifteen is a closed session is necessary. I don't believe it's necessary to provide you with a sense of grace.
No, ma'am.
Okay, we can move right along to item number sixteen, which is the approval, approval of the personal report. A supplement personal report. Can I give a motion to approve those?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion in this, uh, a first and a second. All in favor of say aye.
Uh.
All opposed? Say no.
No.
I think I still hear three ayes, four ayes down that way. So the motion is still approved.
Should we?
You want to do a roll?
Madam Chair, can we do a roll call, please? Since we, since I, I heard one, um, one no vote.
Okay.
Mr. Farmer?
No.
Mr. Lawsonberg?
Yes.
Mrs. Atkins?
Yes.
Mrs. Catlin?
No.
And Mrs. Frazier?
Yes.
Thanks. It's three to two.
So we are now at item number seventeen. Are there matters from the board? Any matters the board would like to bring forward at this time? Okay, hearing none. We will move on to public announcements. And our public announcements for this evening are, excuse me, this is tiny. Um, the budget work session, um, and public hearing, we're gonna have a public hearing?
Uh, that's right, Madam Chair. It's just another opportunity for the public to provide input on the proposed FY26 budget. So it'll be, it'll be at the, at the beginning of the work session.
Okay, so we'll have a, a budget work session and public hearing next Tuesday night, February the twenty-fifth, at six PM here in the cafeteria. We will also have, the board will have a closed session next Tuesday night, February twenty-fifth, at five PM. Um, the joint board work session, uh, between the school board and the board of supervisors is scheduled for March eleventh. Um, the location of that meeting is, um, to be determined.
And I, I believe, Madam Chair, that that's gonna be at the County Administration Building.
Mr. Catlin is saying yes. So we'll be at the, um, County Administration Building. Do we have a time?
I believe that is six PM.
At six PM, March eleventh, six PM, at the County Administration Building. Our next scheduled, regular scheduled meeting will be March eighteenth, twenty twenty-five, six PM, here in the cafeteria again. And do, do, uh, I'll just have one, we don't, we don't sing on that one. Uh, March fourth. That we're gonna.
Yes, thank you. Would you like me to?
Go ahead.
So on March fourth is the, uh, Eastern Region, the VSB A Eastern Region Forum. And I believe all five of our board members have RSV, RSVP to attend that event. It's in the Caroline County. And so, uh, just wanted to inform the public that our board members will be attending an event, but no action will be taken because it is a social event. And the school board members from all around the Eastern Region will be attending as well. So thank you all for the RSVP.
All right. Um, last announcement that we have, in case somebody didn't hear, school is closed tomorrow. Are we doing, um, work from home?
Tomorrow is a flex learning day. Yes, thanks, Madam Chair. Um, expecting some snow accumulation at some point in the morning. And depending on which news you're listening to, it could start at seven AM or as late as seven PM. So earlier the better, I hope, for the decision making. But lots of the schools in the region, uh, have already closed to in-person instruction. And so, uh, yes, ma'am, it's a flex learning day at home and students should have access to all of their learning materials already. And we'll make a decision about Thursday at some point in the afternoon tomorrow. See what, I don't know what tomorrow looks like. Mr. Stone, thanks for, thanks for, for turning on the snow machine and helping us out.
I can't thank the system for that. All right, um, if there's no further business, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Second.
So move the property second all in favor of say aye.
Aye.
This meeting is adjourned. Thank you.